Good evening, welcome to the April 29th City Council Meeting. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Agenzio.
Here.
Here, Councillor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Garino Sawaya.
Here.
Here, Councillor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councillor Jaramillo. Is absent, Councillor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councillor Nowoselski.
Here.
Here, Councillor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Councillor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, the quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of April 8th?
No approval.
Calendar item number three, Public Hearings. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance relative to street and sidewalk opening permits during winter months.
This is a public hearing, we're going to open the floor to proponents, anyone in favor? Good evening ma'am, please state your name and address for the record.
Claire Inzirillo, 281 Broadway Solicitor's Office. I'm a supporter of these amendments, this was done in conjunction with the DPW. They flagged numerous inconsistencies, very outdated policies, the want to open up more work periods for some of the contractors we've got, and some homeowners who are looking to do work, so this was well thought out with various department heads and employees in the DPW. I tagged along to make sure it sounded good when it was written out, but that was the main goal behind this.
How are you guys, Chris Chalamet, 519 Malden, and the Assistant Superintendent of the DPW. So we just made some minor updates to the street and sidewalk opening permits to eliminate the complete closure through November 15th to April 15th to allow contractors to continue work, because I know that's made an issue in the past, not being, having those contractors on the roads.
Thank you sir, thank you ma'am, are there any other proponents? Anyone else in favor? Seeing and hearing none, are there any opponents, anyone not in favor? Seeing and hearing none, are there any councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Nowoselski.
Thank you Mr. President. To Chris, I'm glad in Section 4 you left, I don't know what the number 5 stands for in that sub-paragraph, but I put that in about 10 years ago, that nobody can open a street after five years of paving.
Yep, correct.
So I don't know where that number 5 goes, they took it from the old ordinance.
Yeah, that was...
So it's maybe a typo.
I'm sorry, what do you mean by number 5?
It should be an A in, under Section 4?
Yep.
That should be an A rather than a 5.
Under A1?
No.
A15?
No, Section 4. Of your proposal.
Oh, he's looking at the written version, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at what you submitted.
We were looking at our deadline version, I apologize. You're looking at Section 4, which alludes to 1204080A5, correct?
Correct, correct.
Yes, so the five years is what's written in Monaco, that's what our official legislative website lists.
Right, but the number 5 at the beginning of the paragraph, the number, the actual number?
Yes, that's number 5 of the subsection.
Oh, okay. So that's the way it was, okay, because that's what I put in, because people were digging up the streets, and I hope we're still enforcing that, that people, if they open it up early, there's a lot of construction going on in Shirley Ave area.
Yeah, we have not...
And a lot of the new streets were dug up, so I hope we're making those developers repave, repave the streets.
Yeah, we're not changing it.
Oh, I think I understand. So the only changes to that section were the end of the sentence, but because the sentence was so long, I figured we'd put the entire sentence in there, instead of doing the very wordy changes, so the five years was not touched. At the end, we merely eliminated the very wordy language about what an emergency is, and we just consolidated that.
That's fine, I understand that.
I see what you mean, I apologize.
In general, I have no problem with this, you know, because those winter months get difficult.
Yeah.
So, but I just want to make sure that five-year rule is continued.
Nope, that's still gonna, that's still gonna stay.
Right, and, and that we are enforcing it, because like I said, a lot of the streets that have been dug up because of new construction haven't been repaved.
Yeah, so as of now, we just allow them to do a temporary pavement, and then come back in the spring and do a final, either full width or infrared pavement.
Okay, and I hope that occupancy permits are not given out until all that work is done.
I agree, yes. I'll keep track on that.
Thank you.
I'll keep track.
Thank you councillor, councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Chris, I have a couple of questions for you.
Yep.
So Winterbav, you know, has been, they've been digging up Winterbav for about more than a year now.
Correct.
And we were supposed to get, in October, we were supposed to get it paved, but because of the gas lines now, they have to open it up again. And then, now they're talking about, they were talking about the spring to pave, and now they're talking about again October. Because I just want to know if there's a timeline on the lead leaders that Revere has to remove on Winterbav, and when will this, Winterbav be paved? Because you can't even go up and down the street, it's terrible.
I understand, it is bad, but, so as of now, we sent out all the write-off entries for the homes we need to replace their light services. We've received 20 so far, they're going to send up with a follow, a follow-up letter to each home.
So if they don't respond, that's it?
We have to send three notices.
Okay, and if you send three notices and they don't respond, then is that it?
Then that's taken as a rejection that they don't want it removed, yeah, correct.
All right, and so when is the third letter going to go out, do you know?
It's usually 30 days, 30 days, 30 days, so...
Okay, and the first letter went out already?
Yeah, that's already, they've already got 20 back.
Okay.
And I think there's about 40 that did not reply, so...
Okay, all right, thanks a lot.
No problem.
Thank you councillors, any other councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Agenzio.
Thank you, thank you Mr. Chalamet for coming. My question is about the fee for the street opening permit, it looks like it's going from 200 to 500.
Correct.
And for winter excavations, there's an additional 500, so to open a street in the winter would be $1,000?
Correct.
Okay, so my only problem with that is, I know I wouldn't mind utilities, large projects, but a homeowner that goes down his basement...
So I'm sorry, but we do, we, yeah, we noted that, and we, emergency work will only be $500.
Okay, so if a home...
Regardless of winter months.
Okay, so if a homeowner goes down their basement, finds it full of sewage, and they discover that, you know, they have to hire a contractor and get a street opening permit, that cost is directly passed on to the homeowner, I'd hate to see them paying $1,000 in the winter.
Yeah, so Chris actually brought up to me right before the meeting, we're going to add in language, we're going to submit to the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee again, when you guys meet again, that we're going to add a language right at the end that says $500, the additional winter excavation fee of $500 shall not be required in the event of an emergency permit that is issued by the city during this period, so we completely agree.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor, and this will be referred to Legislative Affairs on May 6th.
Mr. President.
Councillor.
Can we suspend the rules, take up motion 20, we have the Chief of Police and the Commander for the State Police here tonight.
Motion to suspend the rules, all in favor, all opposed. We are now under suspension, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by councillors Kelly and Silvestri, that the mayor requests the Chief of Police to provide the City Council with an update on security and safety measures in place on Revere Beach in preparation for Memorial Day weekend.
Councillor Silvestri? Councillor Kelly?
Thank you Chief for being here tonight, thank you Mr. President. Yeah, we just wanted to have you come in tonight. I spoke to you briefly, you explained to me, and I think it's common knowledge, that the beach is really under the jurisdiction of the state. However, there are coordination and collaboration between local agencies and state agencies, and so I thought it would be a good idea for you to just give us an update on the security measures and the collaboration and coordination that's going forward with those local and state agencies in preparation of the Memorial Day holiday. You know, when temperatures warming up, in past years, we do see some, have seen some incidents, we have seen some serious injuries and altercations down there, and I don't think anybody wants to see a repeat performance of what happened last year. So I just thought it would be a good idea for you to come in tonight and give us a little bit of update on security measures, thank you for being here.
Good evening sir, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, David Callahan, Chief of Police, 400 Revere Beach Parkway, Revere, Massachusetts. Good evening councillor Kelly, I know we had a discussion regarding it, and you know, the beach, as everyone knows, is DCR property, formerly the MDC property, and it's patrolled mainly by the State Police out of the Revere Police, Revere State Police Barracks. We assist them when we can, but I am in constant contact with Lieutenant Bossy. Frequently, we talk on the phone, or communicate, or cross paths with one another, and we're in the process now, if in the next week or so, between myself, Lieutenant Bossy, some other commanders from the State Police, from the MBTA, state representatives, and a few other law enforcement agencies, to kind of get everyone on the same page before the warm months come. And we always try to have some type of plan in place, but it's challenging, because a lot of it goes on the weather. And a lot of times too, and Lieutenant Bossy can explain this to you, a lot of times the State Police get extra funding for directed patrols down Revere Beach. So I think they're anticipating that financial assistance that helps them, you know, supplement the manpower down there, and they can do it as the weather starts to get warm. So, you know, we haven't forgotten about what happened last year, it was awful, and you know, they did have patrols down there, but it seems like it kind of got overwhelming pretty quick. We also have collaborative efforts with local communities, I'll talk to the chief over in Chelsea, Everett, Saugus, Lynn, they're very supportive, East Boston, the commander over there will assist us, so we're just trying to keep things in motion, and we want to put you folks at ease. I mean, no plan's perfect, but we try to do the best we can. And if you have any specific questions, if I can answer them, I will, and we have Lieutenant Bossy here as well, so if you want to speak to him directly, he may be able to give you some better insight out of his barracks and his station down there with his manpower.
I would like to, thank you.
Okay. And with that, I'll introduce you to Lieutenant Donnie Bossy, he's the station commander, and he's one of the best commanders we've had down there, very easy to work with and very responsive.
Thank you Chief, thank you.
Good evening sir, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Donald Bossy. I'm a lieutenant with the State Police, my address 220 Revere Beach Boulevard here in Revere. I've been a station commander for three and a half years, this will be my fourth summer. I'm not a Revere native, however, I'm an East Boston native, so this area, these beaches, these parkways are my home, and being a trooper for 32 years, this is my responsibility. As Chief Callahan has said, he and I are not only colleagues in law enforcement, we're friends, we're in constant contact, we spend a lot of time planning, whether it's for the Sandcastle events, the Pumpkin Dash, or just the events that come up. One of the issues that we deal with, when it comes to public safety on the beach, or really anywhere, is that our minimum manning for the State Police, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but it's a desk and two patrols. Now my two patrols are responsible for Oliver Revere Beach, Mary O'Malley Park in Chelsea, Lynn Shore Drive, the Lynn Way, and the Hart Beach, and the Hart Cars Way, and Route 1 from Tobin Bridge to Route 99 in Saugus, a lot of area to cover with two people. In the summertime, we supplement our patrols with dedicated patrols, money that's allocated by the state for patrol of various areas. With that come restrictions, when they give us the money, they don't, they don't give us a blanket check to do as we please, it has to be spent in certain ways. For instance, we can hire four patrols between 3:00 PM and 11:00 PM on certain nights. Now they give us a little bit of scheduling discretion, and when we see a cold rainy night, we'll likely cancel the patrols to make the money go farther. Unfortunately, and this is what happens around Memorial Day, Memorial Day is right near the end of the fiscal year, so we're operating off of what's left from last year. So we only have so much money that has to get us through until July 1st. When I ask for resources, I'm generally received well, but I don't control the purse strings. What we try to do, and I know the chief, his intelligence, along with the State Police intelligence, and the Commonwealth Fusion Center monitors open source media, we monitor to see when there may be a potential threat. We also use history, we know on the first warm day, we're going to have problems, so on those days, we try and put extra staffing, in addition to the dedicated patrol. We have approached the State Police Command staff, we have operation plans in effect, or we have written operation plans for various things. I know we saw last summer and the summer before, we showed up down there in great force, and unfortunately, one, one weekend it got away from us before we had the plan in place. Major James Bazanotti, current major of Troop A, which is all of northeastern Massachusetts, and he's my boss, recently instituted a policy to make it easier for us to respond. Now when we have incidents of the five other State Police Barracks, which are Andover, Newberry, Concord, Medford, and Danvers, there are dedicated patrols that if something happens, there's no thinking, we don't have to try to figure out what to do, we do what's called, we activate a QRF, a Quick Response Force, and patrols going to the start of their shift know that if something happens, not only here in Revere, but it could be anywhere, it could be at the Governor's House in Arlington, or anywhere else, that if they activate a QRF, the patrols from each barracks respond. In addition to that, we've, we're in an agreement, or we've formed an alliance with Troop F, which is Logan Airport, which is very well-staffed, it's the beauty of federal money, and they have their resources available to us, as a matter of fact, I was on the phone with one of their people today about a different matter, and I did bring up, the summer's coming, make sure you're ready, but they will respond with multiple resources, as will Troop H, which is Greater Boston, South Boston Barracks, Milton, and I know the chief has done a wonderful job with our local partners, last year when we did have the issues, within a short time of it going bad, we had a small army down here. Unfortunately, it got ahead of us. The one thing that, and I know people don't want to hear this, but the one thing that I can say is, bad people do bad things. It's our job to stop them, we can't read minds, we try to predict when things are going to happen, we try to have the resources in place, when they happen and we're not ready for them, we try to react as quickly as possible. I believe Colonel Mondruss, the chief, I'm sorry, the mayor, the chief, myself, a bunch of us had a meeting last year, and said, we have to accept that bad people do bad things, and we could make the beach, we can make all of our beaches very safe, but that would require a military state, that would require, you know, metal detectors at the beach, that would require just to show a force, and when nothing's happening, people don't want to see that, people don't want to see me on the beach. I try to get out there and be as friendly as possible, I try to do the same with my troopers, but our job is to get out there, let people know they're safe, and unfortunately, we also have groups that fight that, why are you harassing these kids? I sat in this chamber last year and was, was asked that question, not by the council, but by somebody else, well, kids are down there for, for a good time, can't you let them have their space? We can, within reason. So we have a plan in place, we're working to get plans in place, unfortunately, we don't, I can't promise you this, but I'm quite confident in saying, something will happen this summer, this spring or the summer, and we will try to be prepared for it. If the kids are stupid enough to put it on social media, we'll be more prepared for it, but we'll do our best, and Chief Callahan and I, along with all of our counterparts, will respond rapidly if we're not ready soon as it happens, but in a perfect world, would be enough of a presence that we're a deterrent from things happening bad. So I hope that addresses some of your issues, and I'll be more than happy to take any immediate or any direct questions.
Thank you very much sir.
You're welcome.
Councillor Silvestri?
Thank you Mr. President, and thank you Lieutenant for coming up here tonight. You said, you said it perfect, bad people do bad things, there wasn't any, you couldn't have had more police at the Marathon bombing, and they were still able to pull that off, right? So just hearing that you have a plan in place, they do use social media, so I'm glad you guys are paying attention to that, because that's how they got the word around last year. My biggest concern is, how do we prevent the youth and teenagers from other cities that are taking the MBTA in transit into the city? Is there, I don't know, is there, is there a time where the T's going to call and say, hey, we have an abundance of kids coming through the train station into Revere? Like, is there a call that happens on that? Like, I mean, I don't know if that makes sense, but...
We have addressed that with the Transit Police, that if they see something, because they'll, fortunately for us, the only way to get here by train is you have to go into Boston.
Right.
And you have to switch lines. So if they see large numbers, we hope that they give us a call, and if it's a day that we weren't expecting it, and we don't have extra patrols on, it gives us a shorter window to prepare, but it gives us a window to prepare. We also have to be cognizant when that call comes in of who the group is, what the group is, because sometimes it's a senior skip day, and if it's one school with a senior skip day...
Understood.
Most of you are younger than me. But when I was on, when we had senior skip day, we didn't want me around there. And I'm not saying I want people drinking or partying on the beach, but I understand kids being kids, so we do allow for that. We, within reason. The problem comes when it's two or three schools or towns having skip day at the same time, so we try to monitor through the transit, MBTA has been pretty good, sometimes they have other things going on, and we don't get the call till it's too late, sometimes it's my patrols noticing, hey, there's a lot of people coming off the train, and then we start scrambling, but we can work, and at this upcoming meeting, I think it's next week, we will talk to Transit about giving us a better heads-up on that.
Thank you, and thank you for your time tonight Lieutenant.
You're welcome sir.
Thank you councillor, councillor Garino Sawaya.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome ma'am.
My fellow councillor actually asked the question that I was going to ask, but I want to elaborate just a little bit, is there any way to stop the train from stopping at that area? Would there be a way to talk to someone and have them skip over the Revere Beach stop, if we see that there are a lot of people coming on to our beach?
That's more of a constitutional question, my immediate answer to that would be no, because what happens to the person, I don't want to fail the call from Councillor Nowoselski that one of his constituents couldn't get home, and also, Revere Beach Wonderland Station is the end of the line, so if you stop them getting off at the Revere Beach T Station, what do you do, bring them to Wonderland and then turn the train around without opening the doors?
But what if it was an immediate threat? Like, we had an immediate threat like last year on the beach, if we stopped the trains and all the people from coming off, maybe we wouldn't have had the people there.
By the time the incidents happened last year, the bad actors were already there. There weren't more people coming down to get involved, stopping the trains actually might make it more difficult with getting rid of people. At the end of the day, when, when we saw what was happening, our job was to push them all, and I'm not trying to make more work for the Transit Police, but we were trying to push them all back onto the train, so by stopping the trains, that would actually slow down the evacuation of the beach.
Makes sense, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you councillor, councillor Haas.
Thank you Mr. President, Lieutenant Bossy and Chief Callahan, thanks so much for being here tonight. Great minds must think alike, because both councillor Silvestri and councillor Sawaya kind of spoke to this a little bit, but I'm very happy to hear that you are partnering with the Mass Transit Police. That was one of my questions after last year, if they noticed a huge crowd, or a number of kids getting off at the same stop, and I'm happy to hear that there's a partnership there. And also, I'd like to talk a little bit about the social media aspect. I know a lot of the kids posted beforehand last year on TikTok, Facebook Live, and is that something that's monitored 24/7, or is it mostly looking for tag words or locations?
Now I can't say exactly how they do, Chief Callahan might be able to speak more to how his intelligence section does. We use the Commonwealth Fusion Center, and they monitor all open source media. That being said, what I can also tell you is, after the really bad day with the two shootings last summer, which I believe was the weekend before Memorial Day, we were ready for them to come back, another week that, that they were posting that they were coming back, and a lot of it was stemmed with us greeting them near the T Station. But then, three, three different weeks after that, there was posts that, we're coming back, we're coming back, and as we really looked at the social media, we realized, this is some kid that wants to make himself self-important, and nobody's listening to him. So that also becomes an issue with our preparation, because you have people saying, oh, we're taking over the beach, we're doing this, and they're not, and nobody's listening, so trying to figure out which are the legitimate threats, which are the credible ones, also becomes a challenge for us. And if we gear up every time that happens, for starters, they're making us a dancing monkey, and number two, they're blowing through a state budget that I'm going to have to answer for, or somebody's going to have to answer for. So we try to monitor them, but also look for credibility.
And with the, the Quick Response Force, that's something you said, you just call if there's an incident, and then those units come from other, other beaches, or wherever they may be, stations, other barracks?
Correct, so when our, when the troop-wide patrol boards go out for the day, every barracks has a desk and two is our minimum staffing, sometimes where you may have four or five patrols out of a barracks, it depends on how many people are working that shift, and certain patrols are highlighted, so if the Medford Barracks happens to be a desk officer with five patrols, three or four of those patrols will be highlighted, so if I call up to troop headquarters in Danvers, and I say, we're having incidents, we need a response, they'll just put something out over the air, and everybody throughout the troop that's working, they know either I am a Quick Response Person today, or I'm not, and they automatically respond. So we're not calling each individual barracks, saying, who do you have available, send this one, send that one. The troop headquarters just puts out, we need a response, and everybody responds.
Great, and I know it's a budget issue, but you said two patrols and one desk person?
That, that's our minimum manning statewide. Now that's, I'm not going to comment on the, the State Police policy, it's been that way since the 1970s, when Andover would cover 93 from the New Hampshire border to the Boston Garden, and Section 495 and Route 3 with a desk and two patrols. I at least have a smaller patrol area that my two patrols have to cover, but in the summertime, as you know, a desk and two, no matter how small my patrol area isn't, doesn't, isn't ready to deal with the size of the crowds.
Would they ever look at, say, seasonal coverage, where they would pull officers from other areas off their, I mean, not off the road, but maybe a couple from Logan here and there, a couple from traffic or...
In the summertime, they do staff, my minimum for the evening shift, just the evening shift, the 3 to 11 shift, does go to a desk and three patrols, so we do have one extra body on the evening shift, usually from Memorial Day weekend until Labor Day, but that's only the 3 to 11 shift, and then that's augmented by the dedicated patrols, but again, that's all going to depend on state money, we, I don't know, I don't know how much is left right now, because I don't do the scheduling for the dedicated patrols, but whatever we have, will get us to July 1st, we're hoping, in the new fiscal budget, there'll be money for next year, but given the current climate of the state, I don't know how much money we're getting, so...
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you councillor, councillor McKenna.
Thank you Mr. President, Lieutenant Bossy, I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done for me in Beauchamp. As everybody knows, Beauchamp has DCR roads, and we've had a couple of issues, and I called, and you were very responsive, and got things right away fixed, so thank you. I just want to say, on another note, we've always had problems down Revere Beach, Easter was the worst. You'd go down there, and people from other towns would come in, and they would fight you. I remember that, because I was in a fight once, and, but the thing is that senior skip day is a big, a big day for these kids, and they come down, and the only reason why this is getting attention, because of last year on Memorial Day, or the week before Memorial Day, because there was a gun, and there were shootings, and people got hurt, and that was why, this is why we're talking about this now, but there's always been problems down there, and they've always been addressed, but there was never violence like you see it now. So times have changed, kids have changed, and we just have to address it. Thank you for everything you do, and thank you for everything that you do Chief.
Thank you councillor, councillor Nowoselski.
Thank you Mr. President. Lieutenant, we've been together since the first day you got here.
Yes, sir.
And it's great, you know, that you've taken over some difficult shoes from before, Lieutenant Hanley, and Lieutenant Mills, you know, we all go way back, and I'm probably one of the few people here that could say that. And I'm probably one of the few people here that could say that other than the Councilor Janino. But the CAT team that you have is outstanding, if it's still together. I know you have different people in it. But, you know, between you and the chief, and I remember, I don't know, the chief probably remembers this, about 12 years ago, we got word that there were 300 kids coming in from Boston. And between State, Revere, and T Police, we actually lined up at the exit of the train station and made a line across Ocean Ave, and we had seven buses. And we, and the kids said, where are we going? Where are we going? You're going home. Get on the bus. And we took them back to Boston. So they didn't have a chance to do anything wrong. But, you know, you guys do a great job down there. I appreciate it when we have the sandcastles going on. You guys are right on the job, and we appreciate that. And you know I have been putting that all the time, so...
Yes, you do, sir.
But, no, thank you. Thank the chief, and, you know, and thank the chief from the T Police for all their work. Thank you.
I'm glad you did bring up the CAT team, and I apologize to the council for not mentioning this earlier. Among our staffing, Troop A, as I mentioned earlier, is northeastern Massachusetts. We do have our CAT team, the Community Action Team. In the summertime, they are frequently deployed and spend most of their time at Revere Beach. I'm very fortunate. It's a blessing and a curse. The CAT team is staffed mostly with people that they've stolen from me, some of my best cops. Revere native Carlo Mastromate, who knows everybody in Revere, and I don't know how he isn't the city council president. But Carlo is one heck of a cop. Ty Yam, who used to work for me, one heck of a cop. And their sergeant, right now it's Eddie Troy, who was my eve shift sergeant when I got here. These are people that are used to working with this crowd, because policing on the beach is different than any others. Grabbing troopers are supposed to be interchangeable. It's hard to plug somebody into Revere Beach unless you've really gotten a feel for it. And we're very fortunate that most of the CAT team, which spends most of the summer down here, is experienced with this type of policing. So, I know that desk and two number sounds a little bit, it's not actually as bleak as it looks when we factor in the CAT team, the third patrol in the summer, and any dedicated patrols.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Zambuda.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you for coming up here tonight, but more importantly, thank you for what you do. Some of us know, and thank you, Chief, also, some of us support law enforcement more than anything else. I'm one of those people, and I truly appreciate what you do, and I know what a tough job it is. And over the last several years, it's become a lot tougher than it ever was. So I know enough people don't thank you for what you do, but some of us really do care. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And to your point from earlier, I don't know that I can put people on, first, I don't know that I could get seven buses, and I don't know that we could, but I will say, one of the things that we have found, and I've personally done it, is we do meet them there. And that was two years ago, after one of the big fighting nights, and they came back the following week. I literally greeted almost everybody coming off the train, and we locked up three people within the first probably 20 minutes, but everybody else, I shook their hand or I said hi, and a couple of people asked them why I was harassing them, and so I'm not harassing you, welcoming you to America's oldest public beach. Have as much fun as you want. And my whole theory, and this is what we try to do at the beach, to try to prevent these problems, is the beach is your house, just like it's public, it's America's first public beach. I can't keep people from it. However, if you're gonna come down to the house, you have to remember, Dad's home and watching. So that's the whole message of greeting them, and that's what we try to do. It's easier when we have more person, more personnel down there. But we try to do it, as far as putting them on the bus. I like the idea, I just don't know that I could.
And actually, Mr. President, if I could just respond for a second. Those buses were city of Revere school buses with our drivers.
Even better.
So, we, at that point, it wasn't like it is today, but we did it, it worked.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for coming. Thank you, Lieutenant Bossy, Chief Callahan. Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any questions for you. Just, you know, if there's anything we as a council could do to assist you guys, to help you out, give you resources, reach out to us and let us know. I've seen the changes down there over the years. I know what you're going through, I know your manpower. I know you're shorthanded, I know the city's shorthanded, you're shorthanded, what happens down there. And I've, you know, remember the bars were down there back in the 90s, and the changes happened. So anything we can do, let us know, we'll be there for you.
Thank you, Counselor. And I do appreciate all the support. I know, I know a lot of you personally. I appreciate the support, and I'm glad that we have the relationships that we've had. And my relationship with Chief Callahan, obviously, is very important, but also this relationship with all of you is very helpful.
Counselor Novoselfsky.
Mr. President, thank you. Just, you know, as an FYI, we also have to thank our state delegation. You know, over the years, I mean, going back to even before Representative Einstein and the Speaker, always in the budget, they always had a line item of $250,000 for the state police for extra details. And, you know, and we tried to do it in Revere Beach. I don't know if we used it all for Revere, but, you know, we still had Lynn and Winthrop that we had to deal with. But, you know, we do have to thank our state delegation, and reps and senators at the time, you know, for giving, for getting that money for us in the budget. There was always a line item just for that. So thank you, and thank them.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you both for being here tonight and giving us more comfort. Appreciate you. Anyone else? We'll be placing this on file. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. President?
Back to the record.
If we can stay on suspension and take up the city auditor for items 12 and 13?
Any objections?
No.
Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number 12, communication from the city auditor relative to Massachusetts' general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 and 1/2, departmental revolving fund spending authorization for FY '25.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Richard Viskey, CFO, 281 Broadway. Before you tonight is what would be normally part of the budget documents, but I figured I would get this in front of the council early. And what it does is sets the spending limit for departmental revolving funds that have been set by ordinance by this body for fiscal year 2025. So departmental revolving funds are basically a source of funds and a use of funds that are defined by the law that you set. It's in the ordinance, but the Department of Revenue tried to make it efficient to ordain the revolving funds to save some, some time and effort, but they, they still require a yearly not-to-exceed limit for all of the departmental revolving funds. So what you have before you is all of the departmental revolving funds set by ordinance and a not-to-exceed expenditure amount for fiscal year 2025. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you. Any counselors wishing to speak?
Mr. President?
Counselor O'Ginzie.
Is this gonna be going to Ways and Means, or is this something we're just gonna vote out tonight?
We're gonna vote on this this evening.
Okay. Would you mind tabling this till next week? I had some, I made an inquiry about one of these accounts about three weeks ago, and I'm waiting for some information about revenues and expenditures. And I know it's a very busy time for Mr. Viskey and his employees with the budget coming up, but I'd like to see that prior to voting on this. If we could just table it maybe till next week?
We have a motion on the floor to table this motion until the next meeting, which is next week on the 6th.
Mr. Viskey, do you think you'd be able to have that information by then?
Yeah, no, I actually have it. I just have to coordinate it and review it, and, you know, happy to table this till next week or put it in Ways and Means. Like I said, just trying to get front load on some of these items that are coming up.
I think tabling it would be fine. I just give a few more days.
Sure. Any other counselors have any questions? I'm happy to answer those while I'm here as well.
Yeah, this, sorry, Madam Clerk, I was thinking the same thing. Tabling it would be easier than sending it to some committee.
Yes, yes, yes.
We won't have time otherwise, so.
Right.
Motion on the floor to table until the next meeting. All in favor, all opposed?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So ordered.
Calendar item number 13, communication from the city auditor relative to the wind waste contract renewal.
Hello again, Richard Viskey, CFO, 281 Broadway. As many of you probably are aware, we have a 10-year contract with wind waste for disposal of our solid waste. That contract is set to expire on June 30th of this fiscal year. I have been negotiating with wind waste over the past month and a half on a new contract. We've gone back and forth for several months. What I believe you have before you is the best and final deal that we could put together with wind waste. It's a 10-year contract, but it's five years set, and then options for each of the six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 years on the city's half and the wind waste behalf. And contract we negotiated is set to go up 5.7% on the disposal rate for fiscal year 2025, and then 4% for the 26, 27, 28, 29. The seventh, sixth, and seventh years are 4.25% option for both parties, and then eight, nine, and 10 is 4.5% increase mutually declined by both parties if need be. We did, we're able to negotiate some other benefits with regard to yard waste. We currently pay $16 a ton to get rid of that. They have agreed to take that for free, so long as they can use it in their current facility, where they can spread it out legally, and that seemed to be pretty good. And they have offered a $25,000 a year contribution back to the city. I believe the intent of that contribution is to try to promote a, Jesus, what am I, no, composting, composting, sorry, a composting program, which, you know, anything we can do to get trash out of the general stream at $89 a ton, whether it be through recycling or composting, we certainly rather pay the lower fees. But that's the contract. Anything over three years is required by law to come before the council for a vote, and that is why I'm here before you with that contract, to try to answer any questions with regard to it or otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. We're gonna open up the floor to the city counselors. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
When are they ever gonna close?
I'm not here to speak about the business operations of wind waste. I'm just here to speak of the contract for taking out solid waste.
Did the city ever go through Cavanta? Have they contacted Cavanta to see about taking out our trash? Or are they gonna stick with wind waste?
I certainly haven't.
Why don't we check on, you know, different options instead of just going with wind waste? They truck all kinds of ashes through our city. They go down 1A, then they go down Squire Road, but they don't go through other cities. They're only giving us $25,000. What's $25,000? When other cities are getting hundreds of thousands. I, I, I just, I don't understand why we keep going back and giving them, using them when we want them to close down. They keep trucking all their ash out, because they don't want to reach that 50-foot capacity, which they've been trying, which they've been told they would be shut down after they reached it. I just don't understand how this company can control an entire city. And it's just, I don't know. I'm disgusted with them and the toxic ash that's coming through the city of Revere, and I really don't even want to do business with them, to be honest with you.
Just to clarify one thing, our current trash collecting contracts are such that they are hauling it to wind waste right now. So if we were to look outside to other disposal sites, we would then have to probably open up our collection contracts and negotiate that, because the proximity to the city is advantageous to us, you know.
Cavanta's in Lynn.
Again, our contract is going to wind waste right now, so we would have to open up the contract.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Viskey, the, do we bid this out, or is it just negotiations?
We did not, we did not bid it. We negotiated with them exclusively, and quite frankly, I believe it to be a pretty good deal, regardless of what you think of the business and such. I mean, we have to take our trash somewhere to get rid of it. We've had a very favorable contract. I've checked around. Our rates are as low as anybody's, and for what it's worth, it appears to be a very good contract for us with regard to what we'd pay in other places, and then tacking on any kind of transportation fees that would bring us outside of the city to dispose of it. So we did not put it out for a competitive bid, though, if that's a question. We're not required to by law, either.
Do we investigate what the other cities are paying?
Of course.
Are we one of the lowest?
Yes.
We are. And the $17 per ton is for yard waste only?
It's free now in this contract. They'll be free.
So that $25,000 is annually?
That's a, that's a donation that they've offered to us to use at our discretion, and I believe what the mayor wishes to do is put that towards a composting program in the city that I don't have a ton of information on just yet. Wanted to get the contract approved and then take it from there.
I was gonna say, where would we do composting?
Again, I'll start researching that once I know we have a contract, but I know there's several councils. I know Councilor Haramillo is pretty into the program, and has been educating me on some of the merits. And like I said, anything that can take waste out of the landfill would be great, so I'm looking forward to looking into it.
So the first five years are already negotiated, and we have to negotiate the second five?
It's just option. The sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, and 10th years are options of both wind waste and the city to extend it beyond the five years. But anything after three years has to come before the council, so we, I wanted to do a 10-year deal, but they wanted some flexibility on CPI and such, so we made it that we can also back out and they can back out. So I was hoping for a 10-year deal with lesser percentage increases, and we went back and forth for a while, and they sharpened their pencil, and what I believe is the best deal that I could present on behalf of the city is before you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak?
Mr. President?
Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rich, I know a lot of people, a lot of residents have questioned the EPA guidelines, and they're, they're meeting those said guidelines. If there's, say, two years into the deal, if they don't pass the regulations or whatever guidelines are set in stone, is this a contract the city can find its move out of, or is this something that's set in stone for? Like, what if they have to cease operations there because they fail certain EPA guidelines?
I mean, I'm not too, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't speak too specifically to some of those terms. I do know that they are obligated to the rates they're quoting, whether they have to incinerate here, or take it out, or take the ash out. There's no changing in the rates there, but I really didn't do a deep dive into their whole business and what may or may not happen with them. I mean, I'm aware as much as the normal person who reads in the paper, but as far as it sounds from wind waste, they're gonna continue to operate. Like I said, when their landfill's completely full and they have to truck ash out and all that stuff is, that's part of what they do for their business, and we just want to make sure that we pay the right rate for the amount of trash we take there. So I wish I had better answers, but I'm not too keen on that.
And the yard waste, the free yard waste is for the length of the deal, the entire?
Well, it's, as long as they can use that, I guess the landfill can take the yard waste for free, so if they stop using that landfill, then that free land waste would go away, but that could be within a couple of years. But the trash contract...
Not a couple of months, though, hopefully, right? Not a couple of days?
It was indicated to me, it should at least be two years. It could be longer, but again, there's all kinds of stuff going on at the state and federal level, I think, with regard to their future operations and such, but certainly not here to discuss that, because I'm not an expert on it.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino.
So if I'm not mistaken here, we have one price from wind waste, without anyone else putting any input into it, any other companies looked into any prices or anything, see what's going on out there?
Yes.
Why?
I didn't, we didn't put it out to bid. I didn't, we didn't, we didn't put it out to bid. This was just negotiated between Wind Waste and the city.
But why wouldn't we find, just make phone calls to find out what other, other transfer stations are charging?
I've done, I've done all that, councillor, but we, but we didn't put it out to bid. I don't want, you know, I don't wanna mislead anyone. This is a contract that we negotiated exclusively with them, and, um, and that's how that went. We could've put it out to bid. I don't think we would've gotten anything better than what we got, but, um, that's, that's how we negotiated.
So it's a five-year minimum up to 10 years?
It's a five-year fixed rates, and then the six through 10 are, are rates that either party can back out of if, if they so choose.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Vizque. I just wanna make sure I understand what you're saying here. So let's say, I don't know, they cap the, the fill in Sogus, right? And we're in year three, so our rates are locked in even if they have to transport it somewhere else?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kelly.
So I understand that this was never held out to bid. This is an exclusive contract that you have, but you did say you checked with other cities to see what their rates are. When you made that statement, was that the rates that their, other cities, the rates that other cities are paying exclusively with wind or rates that other cities are paying with other providers of this service?
Primarily with wind because most of the surrounding communities that we come to use them as well.
So you don't have any comparative figures to really, even though you didn't hold it out to bid, you can't confidently say, well, if we did hold it out to bid, we can pretty much say, you know, in comparison with the deal that we have here with wind, it's pretty good over what we would have with someone else, or you just don't even really know what that would be?
Well, like I said, the, uh, the contract that we have for hauling our trash with capital waste is predicated on them bringing the waste to Wind Waste. So if I were to put it out to bid and it were, and somewhere to win, and it was in North Andover State, now I have to go and open up contracts with capital to talk about the transportation cost to and from. Trash is kind of a delicate subject in this city for many reasons, but the ability to get in and out of the neighborhoods before four o'clock during the week and, and the way traffic is and such around there, we, we, you know, nothing's perfect, but I think we have a pretty good system right now, so I didn't think it was worth disrupting the collection contract to go out to bid and try to find places that may save us a couple of dollars, but then cost us money on the other end, so.
And, and other cities are using this facility, just not Revere. Lynn is using it and?
Oh, yeah, there's, yeah, a lot of people use it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't gonna speak on this because I'm so controversial, because everybody thinks I'm a shill for wind, but I guess I gotta put a couple of facts on the table here. Revere has had the most lucrative contract for the last 10 years from Wind Waste, and the CFO has negotiated what I think is a, an unbelievable deal because you won't, you won't get this deal anywhere else. He's a sharp negotiator and knows what he's talking about. I think that he's protecting the taxpayer, and this is a, I've looked over this deal, and it's better than I thought that he could've got. So everybody can say, oh, we shouldn't bring our trash to Wind Waste, let's, let's use another carrier. Almost Boston, Chelsea, Lynn, Sog, everybody burns their trash at Wind Waste and all the surrounding communities. So, uh, it, you know, you could see, I don't think you could save any money on the, uh, the, the end disposal by going somewhere else other than Wind Waste. It has nothing to do with my position on the facts and science, 'cause everybody knows where I stand, that, but I, I wanna commend the CFO for negotiating what I think is a really good deal. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors wishing to speak? Permission to speak from the chair?
Thank you. I have the utmost faith that you have put the numbers together for the city to the best of your ability and got us the best deal. My concern is that if, by shipping out this ash to not meet that 50-foot threshold with our city growing, with surrounding cities growing, how much more transportation of that ash is gonna go through our city? So that's my, my biggest concern, because that was also a bargaining chip in wanting them to stay open, is that, you know, that's the alternative, is to ship it elsewhere, so just my two cents on that. This is going to come to a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Shall the city council approve the contract between Wind Waste and the city of Revere covering a 10-year period beginning on July 1st of '24? Councillor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Garino Sawaya?
No.
No, councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haramillo is absent. Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Silvestri?
No.
No, councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and councillor President Cogliandro?
No.
No. The contract is approved.
Back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered on an ordinance relative to appendix 1, Table 3, salaries of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere, also known as the parity salary ordinance.
This is a public hearing. We're gonna open this to proponents. Mr. Vizque, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I'm a popular guy today, I suppose. Thank you, Rich Vizque, 281 Broadway, City CFO. I did just pass out a slightly revised version of the, one section of the ordinance that after I put the budget together, I ticked and tied the budget numbers to the ordinance here, and there were a few that were off for one reason or another, but the amended salaries are, are just three employees that may had some other things added in there besides the base salary. So what, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to update the salary ordinance of the city that has not been updated, I believe, in at least a dozen years or so.
Mr. Vizque, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Do you have an extra copy for me?
Oh, I, I, yeah.
Oh, thank you. Oh, you're all so kind. Thank you.
Sorry about that. So yes, um, again, with, with the help from the city clerk and the solicitor's office, myself and my, my budget team, we went through and culled through all the positions that are not covered by collective bargaining agreements with those employees, are considered exempt employees, and they are listed in the salary schedule E that I just passed out modified. This salary ordinance update also does re-clarify the longevity compensation as well as compensation for the city council, the mayor's office, and many of the boards and commissions in the city. So it took a lot of work. I, I think it's been just refreshed every year via the budget process, but we thought with the new administration and the timing was right to kinda get this modified and up to date so that we can have a, a current version of the salary ordinance that will tie to the fiscal year '25 budget. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions on this. Well, it's a public hearing, so I guess I'm not answering questions. I just, I'm just here to support it, but we'll be answering any questions if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vizque. Any other proponents, people in favor? Seeing and hearing none, we will move to opponents. Anyone not in favor? Seeing and hearing none, I will open this to city councilors. Any councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Argenzio?
Thank you. I just have a question for Mr. Vizque. From now on and in subsequent years, will this salary schedule be updated by parity with the union employees? If the union employees get 2% or 1% or 3%, would this just automatically click in for these employees?
That's a great question. I might defer to Ashley on that, but I, um, I would hope so, and if not, maybe we can make it as such that when we voted, it, it does. But I know that the parity clause is pretty much what we've been following for the last 14 years or so here without this being updated, so I don't see why we couldn't, but maybe put some belts and suspenders on it to make sure that it's, you know, it doesn't have to come before you every year.
It, it makes sense because all these employees, you have a union negotiating for one group, and it can just carry through to the rest of, of the employees.
I know historically that's what we've done, so if we can memorialize it through the ordinance, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Vizque, so these positions are kinda at the will of, of the mayor, right? I, I mean, you're, we're setting the rates, but the mayor can, can negotiate back and forth with someone who's taking a job in a position, right?
My, my understanding, uh, with speaking with the city clerk, is that what this does is set, say, minimum. It doesn't set a maximum, so I believe what's voted here would be at least what that position would pay, not any less, but potentially could become more if the council votes so during the budget process. But if you read the language of the law, once these are ordained, there's really no play in those numbers, 'cause we would just be breaking our own ordinance, so it, it's considered to be at the minimum base salary that that position pays.
Right. But to councillor Argenzio's point in making the, the raise go concurrent with the union raises, you have someone that could be taking a job this year, I don't know, I'll pick one out, $121,000, and this is set, this year we negotiated just a one-year contract, correct?
We have one-year deals with Unit A and Unit B, and, and we don't have any deals with any other unions, but everybody's in contract till June 30th, but we haven't done any contracts in the city longer than one year, is correct.
Right. So potentially, someone could be getting whatever their salary is here, and then a year from now, get a 3% raise, and then the following year, because the contract's gonna be up in a year, going, do you see what I'm getting at, or?
I think I see what you're getting at, and just to clarify, the salary that would be, that you're voting on right now is for fiscal year '25, that is the fiscal year that we've agreed to contract, so there'll be nothing in '26 yet. We don't have any agreements. This would actually cover the, the 3% call that was given to Unit A and Unit B for fiscal year '25, so this directly correlates to the budget you'll see in June.
Okay.
But there's no, there's no call up for '26 yet because nobody has an agreement past '25. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Garino Sawaya.
Hi, Mr. Vizque. Thank you for coming. My only question is, is this included on, on this list here? Are we including the people who just recently got hired and giving them another raise on top of their new pay that they just got hired with?
These are for positions. I don't speak in terms of people-
But wait a minute. If there's new positions that people were just hired, should they be getting another raise on top of the job that they just got?
I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna answer that. I'm gonna say that this is the fiscal year '25 salaries for the positions that exist right now. There's no new positions in here.
There aren't?
There's no, everybody who has, everybody here will be in the budget. They all exist. I don't think there's any positions-
There's all, there's no new hirees in here?
Well, there are new hirees, but there's no vacant positions.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the people may be new, but the positions are not?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other councillors wishing to speak?
Well, to be further clarified, there are some positions in here that are new to this salary chart, but the jobs are there and the people are working, so I don't believe there's any position on this that's vacant at the present time.
Thank you. Any other councillors? This is going to be, please hold on. Pardon me. This is gonna be referred to Legislative Affairs on May 6th.
Thank you.
Councillor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first matter we brought up was 24-057. This is a motion presented by councillor Zambudo, and it's an act relative to city employment and candidacy for offices of mayor. We made a couple of amendments to it, and we have a final draft, and it was looked upon favorably, so if Madam Clerk can read the amended version and call for a roll call to look on it favorably.
The amended version, as reported out of the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee, was as follows. An act relative to city employment and candidacy in the offices of mayor, city councillor-at-large, board councillor, and school committee of the city of Revere. Section 1, no city councillor or member of the school committee shall hold any appointive city office or city employment during their term. Section 2, no person shall be a candidate for more than one municipal office at the same election. And section 3, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on the legislation as amended. Councillor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haas is recused from discussion. Councillor Haramillo is absent. Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Silvestri?
No.
No, councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and councillor President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the special legislation is approved.
Can, uh, Mr. President, suspension of rules? Or are we under suspension?
We are not.
Okay.
Motion to suspend the rules, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Reconsideration and a hope it will not prevail.
On the reconsideration, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered. Back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item, oh, I'm sorry, this is, we're continuing on the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee report.
So the rest of the items, 24-061, 24-086, and 24-091. The first one was tabled in deference to the councillor that proposed it. That will be on May 20th, and the other two items will be brought up on May 6th. We had a little discussion, and the, has to be revised, and will be presented on May 6th.
Next up is the Ways and Means Subcommittee report.
Councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, tonight we had a Ways and Means Subcommittee. We had one motion, 24-092, which was voted out favorably.
Will we read the amendments, Madam Clerk?
So the motion was amended coming out of committee as follows. I'll reread it on the, for the report. Motion presented by councillor Argenzio as amended, that the mayor and chief of infrastructure, Don Chiamella, be requested to return, or to amend the water and sewer discount program for seniors to the following rate structure. 35% discount for consumption of 25,000 gallons or less, 20, 20% discount for consumption of 25,001 gallons to 70,000 gallons, and 10% discount for consumption of 70,001 gallons or more.
Take a roll call on the motion, or we can do all in favor, all opposed, on the motion as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
So ordered.
Calendar item number 10, communication from the mayor relative to the reappointment of John Camerata to the election commission.
This will be sent to the Appointment Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 11, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Leah Hoffman to the planning board.
Appointments.
Onto motions. Calendar item number 14, motion presented by councillor Kelly, that the mayor be requested to begin negotiations with- to begin negotiations with trade unions for the purpose of entering into a PLA between the City of Revere and labor unions relative to the construction and build of the proposed new high school at the Wonderland site, to ensure that the project is a quality build and built in a timely and efficient manner.
I believe this motion has been withdrawn, Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number 15, Motion Presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya, that the mayor request the traffic commission to approve the installation of a speed table on Sagamore Street to slow down cut-through traffic.
Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 16, Motion Presented by Counselor Kelly, that the following ordinance be ordered to a public hearing, an ordinance further amending the senior citizen property tax work-off abatement.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this has to do with the lottery for senior citizens, available to 50 senior citizens, which is a tax abatement work-off program. And when I looked into this, it hadn't been, it hasn't been updated since 2014. So currently, the rate per hour is $12 per hour. I'm asking that that be increased to the current minimum wage, which is $15.75 per hour. And I'm asking that the tax credit of $750 be increased to $1,000. And by doing such, that would increase the number of hours worked from 62 to 63. But again, I think this is something that does help seniors. We do want to give seniors every opportunity to make it easier for them to stay in their homes. This not being increased in the last 10 years, I think it's overdue considering inflation and everything that is going on and the tough times that so many of us are facing in terms of a crunch. So I think this is something that would really help, and I'd like to see it get put in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes, this is an excellent motion, Counselor Kelly. It hasn't been increased for so many years, and you're asking senior citizens to come and work for less than minimum wage. So I think it's a tremendous motion, and hope to see it move forward.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
I wholeheartedly agree with Counselor Kelly. I think this is an excellent motion as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Great motion, Counselor Kelly. This is going to be ordered to a public hearing on May 20th.
Calendar item number 17, Motion Presented by Counselor Novoselfsky, that the city council approve the attached proclamation declaring May 24 Jewish-American Heritage Month.
Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, City Revere has established itself as a very diverse community, and this is just showing the inclusiveness of all religions and faiths, creeds, everything we can think of. And we've done a great job dispersing the word that we're diversified. Now, whereas the City Revere has been continually renewed and enriched by the many different people who choose to reside here, each bringing a part of their own heritage, which over time becomes part of our common heritage. And whereas President Joe Biden proclaimed that the month of May 2024 be recognized as Jewish-American Heritage Month in the United States of America, which has been going on since 2006, since President Bush. And whereas generations of Jewish-Americans have helped the City Revere and the United States of America what they are today, there are currently more than 5 million Jewish-Americans in the United States. And whereas approximately one quarter of Revere's population was Jewish in the mid-'20s, with three synagogues located throughout the city, being in Shirley Ave and Beachmont. And whereas Jewish-Americans have shared their rich culture, faith, tradition with neighbors and friends, while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants. And whereas Jewish people around the globe have fled persecution, endured pogrons and genocides for centuries, and currently face a record rise of antisemitism. And whereas Jewish-Americans have joined with all faiths to work for Takun Olam, repair of the world, remembering lessons of the Holocaust, and leading movements for civil rights and social justice. And whereas during this special month, Jewish-Americans are able to embrace American diversity and celebrate the spirit of community that binds us together as one nation. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city council of City Revere proclaims the month of May 2024 in the City of Revere as Jewish-American Heritage Month. Be it resolved that the residents of the City of Revere are encouraged to join us and our Jewish-American neighbors in this special observance, and to learn more about the heritage and contributions of Jewish-Americans. And it's signed, and I thank the mayor also for signing this, Mayor Keefe and Clerk Ashley Melnick. And at this time, I do want to wish everybody that, we have been going through Passover over the last week, and like everybody else, have their own remembrances on what they do and how they handle their own religion. And I thank everybody for understanding and supporting us here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President, and my thanks to Counselor Novoselfsky. I think it's a wonderful thing. At this time in our world history, there is no, nothing more appropriate, what's going on right now with the antisemitism. It's just unbelievable, and breaks my heart. And I congratulate my colleague, and I, of course, wholeheartedly support him. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too support this motion, but I also want to speak to the fact of what's happening in and around college campuses in these days. You know, back at the beginning of OEF and OIF, we made it a point to not group all Muslims as terrorists and bad people, and that was something that we stood by. And I think that's something we need to stand by with this here, because social media and online are portraying both sides as evil, and I just want to see the people here in the United States be supported throughout their heritage and for supporting their heritage, and not be shamed or punished or hurt in any way, because they are proud of their Jewish heritage or Palestinian heritage. This is not for the Israeli government. This is for the heritage of the people here in the United States and around the world. And that's what I'd like to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 18, Motion Presented by Council President Cogliandro, that the city council discuss the city's street sweeping program, including fees, scheduling, and any other potential changes.
Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. This, this motion came about speaking to the parking director in regards to some of the changes they're making to ticketing during street cleaning. A lot of the people, and I know in Ward 3 and Ward 6, we don't have actual sidewalks, we have transitions. So to avoid a street sweeping ticket, what's happening is people are pulling up on the sidewalk with all four wheels, and, you know, the parking department is trying to put a stop to that. Speaking to a resident, it brought up some really interesting ideas in regards to the consistency of certain streets, getting, street cleaning, the amount of tickets, or the amount that the street cleaning tickets are. And it just, it got me thinking that maybe we do need to discuss how often certain streets get cleaned, you know, because ultimately, we want to, we want to help people. And I don't think that the first thing that people are thinking about on the last Friday or the last Thursday of the month is, oh, I got to make sure I'm not parked to avoid the street cleaner. I don't believe we should be penalizing people that are paying taxes in this community. I also believe in accountability as well. So I believe that a discussion is warranted on this. For instance, Broadway should be cleaned every day. I believe it is cleaned every day. My street, Newman Street, still a lot of old-school Italians would like to go outside and sweep up their front, the front of their house. I think we all see them. They clean the streets, they clean the neighbors, they'll clean you if you want. So, but I would like to put this into the, maybe the Public Works Subcommittee. And obviously, any other counselors wishing to speak on the motion? No. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you. During, well, on Winthrop Ave, we've been inundated with National Grid, the Water Department, everybody. And for the last, since last year, we haven't had a street cleaning all the way down Winthrop Ave because of construction. We still have leaves from last year on the, in the gutter. And I'm one of those Italian women that go around and clean the gutter and clean my neighbors, and if you want to come down, I'll clean you too. But it's just, it's hard, because I call DPW, and they won't, they won't come down, because they're afraid of stones, they're afraid of this. And we contract out this Arrow street sweeping, you know? I just wish that we, I know we have a street sweeper this, and I'll ask Paul Argenzio, we have a city street sweeper. So maybe that city street sweeper could do where the construction, you know, where we're limited with construction, because Arrow will not come down, because he's so afraid that he's going to hurt his machine with rocks, that he won't come down. And I called the DPW, and it's still not done. And last year, the city, the, the street sweeping has not been done where the construction is since last year.
So I can respond to that if you'd like.
Counselor Argenzio.
So a, a street sweeper is a very delicate piece of equipment, and it does get damaged very easily. But however, the people that are doing the construction should have construction sweepers there, and they should be sweeping periodically or right every day. I mean, that should be the responsibility of National Grid or whoever the contractor is.
So I don't think that's, I, and I'll check into that, but I know last year, when I talked to the foreman, he called the city to come down, and the city wouldn't come. So I'll find out tomorrow, but thank you for that information. I really appreciate it.
That should positively be something that they do.
Okay, great, because there's a lot of rocks and there's a lot of dirt. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, counselors. Counselor Kelly.
I think this, this is warranted for a discussion, because as many calls as I get from residents who say the streets aren't being cleaned properly, because cars are being parked all four tires on the sidewalks, and the street sweeper will just go right down the street and won't clean, because he's afraid to get too close in proximity to parked cars, because he doesn't want to damage them. I get those calls. I also get calls from constituents that say, my street's clean, I don't need to have this cleaned, and it's an inconvenience for me to move my car. I also get calls from people that like to take walks in the neighborhood and can't walk on these so-called transitional sidewalks, or because of the cars being parked on all four tires, and they don't have any room to walk, so that forces them into the street. So I think we definitely need, you know, it warrants a larger discussion to try to come up with some kind of a balance, to take all of these things into consideration and come up with some kind of a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And if I may, you know, one of the other changes we could potentially make is the time of day. If we send the street sweeper out after people have already left for work, it might alleviate some of the, the parking that happens on the side of the street, you know? And I just want to state for the record that I do not believe in any way, shape, or form, if it's back on the table, I don't know, but we should not be towing cars. Just don't do it. We used to do that. I heard that it's a potential to come back. I do not want that to happen.
Mr. President?
Counselor Haas.
I will say, thank you, Mr. President. I will say, I was in East Boston the other day, and I was saying to myself, there's so many parking spots on, near Maverick, Maverick Station, I was shocked. And then I turned the corner, and there had to be three or four tow trucks, because it was street sweeping day, and they were towing the cars like you wouldn't believe.
Counselor Janino?
First of all, this is a good motion, Mr. President, and this program hasn't been looked at in quite some time. I remember the first time doing the sweeping citywide, with the towing, the tagging, the whole nine yards. The only addition's really been, they've added some of the main drags to be done more. They added it up till December now, for some reason. So I think it's time that we look at this program and figure out what's working, what's not working with it.
Counselor McKenna.
Counselor Janino, your daughter, Rep., Janino and I put that ordinance in to increase it until December. And the reason why is because we, the trees are not, the leaves are not falling, they're falling later in the year, so that's why we put it in for December. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I agree this should be looked at. It has been a long time. You know, honestly, you know, I don't have an issue down in Ward 2, you know, and we're very strict with people, and people are good with moving their cars. You know, you can come down Hitchborne Street, Highland Street, Thornton Street, Sumner Street, Walland Ave, and find no cars there on Thursday morning. Every week, they know to move their cars, they put them in their driveways, they put them on their front lawns, they put them in their backyards, and they sit on the porch waiting for the sweeper to come by, and it goes back out on the street as soon as the guy leaves. And, you know, they, they know, down in my neighborhood, they know, and, which I'm glad. And, you know, Shirley Ave, you know, we always had, they do every day but alternate sides of the street, because there are still residents that live down there, and they have trouble finding other parking spaces, because all the streets around there were done on the same day, on that Thursday. So, you know, but things work out, and we do it alternate days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Tuesday and Thursday. And also, we had, we used to have, we lost them, but one of our senior citizens used to do the other side of the street as a senior citizen work-off program, clean the opposite side of the street that wasn't swept on those alternate days. And it worked out very well, and they even went into the parks, you know, into Costa Park and Fitz Henry Square, and cleaned in there, just to make their 15 hours a week work. And, and it worked out. And so I think it's a good discussion for us to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. If I may, just, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the parking penalties ordinance, and I'm looking at parking on a sidewalk is a $20 fine, but obstructing a street sweeper is 50. Here's another one. $25, $25 fine. Parking on a rotary or traffic island is only $25, but 50 if you're, if you're in the way of the street sweeper. Okay, so yes, we definitely need to talk about this. Public Works, I believe, is Counselor Novoselfsky. This will be referred to Public Works. Thank you.
Calendar item number 19, Motion Presented by Council President Cogliandro, that the city council award certificates of commendation to the Revere High School Speech and Debate Team in recognition of their performance at the MSDL State Speech Championship.
Motion speaks for itself. Save my comments for that evening. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 21, Motion Presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya, that the mayor request the DCR to station a lifeguard on Revere Beach in front of the Jack Satterhouse. Lifeguards are not stationed this far up the beach, but there is a great need for a lifeguard in this vicinity due to the many seniors utilizing the beach residing at the senior living facility.
Counselor Garino Sawaya.
I've received phone calls from, I want to say approximately six or seven seniors over at the Satterhouse, and they all had the same concerns. As they get older, their mobility isn't as good as it used to be, as I'm seeing now. But what's happening is, they sometimes have their grandchildren, and if their grandchildren are on the beach with them, and they want to play in the water, God forbid something happens to them, they can't get to them unti- happens to them, they can't get to them on time, and they, there is not a lifeguard stationed there that could actually assist these seniors that enjoy going to the beach on a daily basis. That's why they're at the Jack Satterhouse, right on the beach. So, if we can have the DCR help us with this, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other councilors? Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can't agree more. I think it's a great motion. Never realized that there wasn't a lifeguard down the end crossing the Jack Satter, but I think there should be, so I support this full heartily.
Thank you, counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Counselor item number 22, motion presented by Counselor Kelly, that the mayor request the Director of Finance to set the fee for a municipal lien certificate at $50.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was actually brought to my attention by an astute resident, that right now, for our MLCs, our municipal lien certificates, we are charging a $25 fee. Towns like Winthrop, for instance, is charging $75. Lynn is charging $75. Somerville, $60. So, I think we should increase this in an attempt to try to bring in some more revenue to the city. I believe in fiscal year 2022, there were 755 municipal lien certificates issued. So, if we were to bump up that $25 to $50, or even $75, we're doubling or even tripling those fees coming into the city. And with the high school, we can use every bit that we can get. So, I think this might be something that we should consider. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
I love this motion, Counselor Kelly, but I would go with the $75. The $75 will meet the norm for the surrounding cities, and the more revenue we bring into the city, the less tax burden we have on the taxpayers. The liens are only usually requested by an attorney, right? When they're selling a house? So, let's bump it up to 75 bucks.
I'm all in favor of that, amending the motion to, from 50 to 75.
I believe Sargus is at $50, if I'm not incorrect. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Anthony Pozziale, 51 Arcadia Street. I think in a time when things are so expensive, it's very nice to have something that's 25 bucks. I've, for years, people may or may not know this, but I used to own a franchise with this company, Home Vester's, where I bought and sold homes. And the other person usually gets stuck with the bill of 75 dollars, not the attorney. The person selling the houses, and I know it's not, like, if you're selling a house for a million dollars, and you're going to make $250,000, like, what's the big deal? But you guys were just talking about not nickel-and-dime on people on permits or on parking tickets. I don't think we should do this. I think we should leave it at 25 dollars.
Mr. President, to your point, yes, Sargus is 50 dollars.
We have an amendment to the motion on the floor right now to change it to 75 dollars. Is that still? Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Mr. Pozziale, this is from people who are selling their homes and are leaving the city of Riviere. Why would we not try to make the most money for our taxpayers?
I, I don't want to get into a back-and-forth with the, with the audience. No, no disrespect, sir.
You know what? Let's keep it at 50 for now. How's that? Okay?
The motion on the floor is now amended to 50 dollars. Do I hear 45?
withdrawing the amendment on the motion as presented.
Withdrawing the amendment on the motion as presented.
I like to keep things interesting.
On the original motion. All in favor, all opposed? Aye.
Counselor item number 23, motion presented by Counselor Argenzio, that the mayor be requested to instruct the Engineering Department to stop the practice of reducing the size of residents' driveways when sidewalks are being reconstructed unless the driveway poses a public safety concern.
Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, recently, the Engineering Department has decided to follow the letter of the law with the ordinance, and driveways that have been established for 20, 30, 40, 50 years, as they're reconstructing these streets, they're now attempting to reduce these driveways down to 20 feet to be in align with the, with the ordinance. We just had a little situation up off Park Avenue, and I want to thank the mayor and the Engineering Department for helping out that homeowner, and the issue was resolved. But the, the practice of doing this, I don't really see what the point is, going into old, established neighborhoods and starting to reduce these driveways that people have had for, like I say, 20, 30, 40 years. When I was superintendent, and we were faced with reconstructing a street, I would go up and down the street with the engineer at the time, Michael Kessman, and unless a driveway posed a public safety concern, people used to have driveways, maybe they built something on their property, and now they no longer had the depth, so their car would stay out onto the sidewalk, blocking the sidewalk. In that case, we would close that driveway up. So I, I don't see what is to be gained by doing this. I know the ordinance says 20 feet, and I, I don't see going back all these years to try to close these up, does anything for the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I couldn't agree anymore than with this motion. The redo in Washington Ave., and, and people are being forced to pay money and, and lose their driveway. It's, it's asinine, excuse my language, but it really is foolish, and it's really sticking it to the homeowner. And I think if it needs an ordinance change, we do it right now, because it's, it's just not fear. And, and there's no reason for it. It's just following what, what I consider a stupid law. And, and the counselor said it perfectly. When he was superintendent, he did, and on a case-by-case basis, if something was a public safety hazard, you get rid of it. If it's not, leave it alone, stop torturing people. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Argenzio, great motion. I have been called by several people on Washington Ave., who actually, for years, invested their own money into their sidewalks and driveways, and now with the new curb cuts, they're going to be losing several feet of their driveways and, and stuff like that, so I don't see how this in any way helps our residents. I think it's a nuisance on them, and I don't think it should be happening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Great motion, Counselor Argenzio. I just want to say that I've witnessed you and the engineer, Kessman, go up and down the streets, talk to residents, and help them. If there was a bush or something, and there was an, you know, footage that they couldn't, they needed a little bit more room, you gave it to them. And I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, I agree with Counselor Argenzio, and these places that they are reducing shouldn't be reduced. These are grandfathered in. You know, that, that's a magic word, grandfather. It was there before, the rule changed, it stays the way it was before, not under the new rule. And I know, you know, Mike Kessman was great. I, I always walked the, the streets. I walked with Counselor Argenzio when he was the superintendent, talking about driveways. There were areas that we added driveways for people, you know, because they had the space to do it, and they, they were driving over the sidewalk, you know, without the curb cut. And I'd ask him, "Would you rather have a curb cut here with a little driveway?" And they said, "Absolutely." And I talked to, you know, Counselor Argenzio, and we, we made things work. And if we had to widen something a little more, we'd widen it a little more. If we had to reduce it some, for various reasons, we'd do it. You know, Mike Kessman was very good, and, you know, honestly, I haven't heard, I, I don't think they have a replacement for him. They have someone that does it. But I haven't heard from this, you know, the city engineer about things on new sidewalks. I haven't heard anything from his engineer that he uses about going to, doing new sidewalks. We're doing Campbell Ave. now, new sidewalks. And, you know, I would like to have had some interaction before they even did it, while they were planning it, to show where we could add trees to it. And they didn't even do tree pits. So, you know, there has to be more discussion on that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Janino.
This is an excellent motion, brought by Counselor Argenzio here. It's one of the first situations I had to deal with over in Ward 6, with Washington Avenue and the residents over there with the, concerned with the drivers cut down for no apparent reason at all, and I support this here.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Kelly.
I just want to thank Counselor Argenzio for bringing this motion. It's an excellent motion, and I think a, a, just a blanket rule like this just takes away keeping the best interest of the resident at the forefront, which is really what we should be concerned with. And it sounds like it used to be that way, and maybe now we're moving away from that. And I think we need to go back and, and really look at this and, and give it some more individuality to the circumstances, so, thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Hess.
Thank you, Mr. President. I totally agree with my fellow counselor to the right of me, Counselor Argenzio. You know, in a time where we're squeezed, where residents feel like they're being squeezed, I can't imagine a Riviere senior walking out of their house to see their driveway had been cut, you know, without any safety concerns or anything like that. And I like the idea of Counselor Argenzio saying he used to go walking with Mr. Kessman on a house-to-house basis, and form talk to the residents. This is crazy, that this is just being done, and the residents are just walking out of their house to see it. It doesn't, it doesn't really add up. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. What I was really surprised about was I got a phone call from a resident there, and they were told that if they wanted to keep their driveway the same way as they bought the house, that they were going to have to get a variance to avoid having their driveway closed up a little bit. And then they were told they needed an up-to-date plot plan, which we all know costs, you know, somewhere between $2,000 and $3,000. We need to do better for, for the residents there. This person bought this home, has lived there for over a decade. Now we're telling them, "You got to get a variance to keep it that way." That should not be the case. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Counselor item number 24, motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya, that the City Council order to a public hearing the following amendment to the zoning map of the city of Riviere. An ordinance further amending the zoning map of the city of Riviere relative to the Ted District, Section 1, Title 17 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Riviere, and the zoning map provided by Section 1712020 of said title, is hereby amended by changing the zoning district of the following parcels from GB to Ted. Parcel 10-188-A3-1, -2, -3, and -4, and that's on North Shore Road.
Counselor Garino Sawaya.
In order to allow a business owner in the city to have a Class II One-Car Pocket license, we will just be making the two existing non-conforming businesses, which are both Riviere garages, in that location that is now GB District conforming by making it a Ted District. In other words, we're basically making this Ted, which will make the two non-conforming uses currently permitted adhere to the location conforming. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Anyone else wishing to speak? This is going to be ordered to a public hearing on May 20th.
Counselor item number 25, motion presented by Counselor Argenzio, that the mayor be requested to contact the DCR and the state delegation to make the portion of Riviere Beach from Beach Street to Riviere Street dog-friendly year-round. Many dog owners enjoy walking along the beach with their dogs during the winter months, and making this area for the many dog owners who live in Riviere a year-round activity.
Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you very much. I was contacted by quite a few dog owners that enjoy going on the beach with their dogs. And the DCR bans April, I think, through October. I mean, I've gone down the beach this past month, and there's just a few people walking in their overcoats on the beach. I have in here, I suggest this area from Beach Street to Riviere Street, because I don't see any piping plovers there, and there are no homes. But I would be amenable to anything that the DCR could come up with, just a small portion of the beach that be designated dog-friendly. If, if that can't be done, maybe close the window a little bit, maybe make it Memorial Day to Labor Day when these dogs aren't allowed. But it's, it's an enjoyable activity. I've, I've walked many times with my, I've never met a, a dog owner that, that wasn't doing the right thing, and dogs are always friendly, so I'd like the DCR to look into this and, and come up with at least something.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Argenzio, it's a good motion. I'd like to just possibly amend it. I don't know if it, if it would automatic, but just to ensure that they're on a leash.
Oh, positively. Still leash law on Riviere, and that wouldn't be, I'm not intending to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Although I completely respect Counselor Argenzio for this motion, I've gotten about a dozen phone calls from residents that live along Riviere Beach that are against it. The reason being is, first, they were, they had to overcome the piping plovers and them taking over our beach. And, I mean, I love dogs, I, I'm a dog owner, so I, I completely understand where this is coming from. But they, what they were looking at is, people go to the beach, we, we have such a short summer here on Riviere Beach, so it goes from Memorial Day to maybe Labor Day if we're lucky. So we take our families on the beach. Some of the kids may be afraid of the dogs, some of the dogs may be aggressive. It's, you, you want to be, want these families to be able to enjoy the short time that they do have on the beach, not to worry about whether a dog is going to come up to them or, or, or whether there's going to be poop left on the beach, which is extremely a health hazard for, for these children. But my, I have a little suggestion that is used on another beach in the area. Maybe have the dogs there prior to 9:00 AM in the morning, and after 7:00 PM, after dusk, to walk the dogs, so the people do have their time with their families on the beach, not having to worry about a dog coming up to them. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, last year, before the council changed, I put a motion in for a dog, a dog park on the beginning of Riviere Beach, before the piping plovers, and a part where no one uses. No one uses it. It's, it abuts, I think it's Broad Sound Ave., but it's all rocks. There's really no residents unless it's up. It's, it's a small place, but dogs can go in there. And I know I've been in California, and they have dogs on the beach, but they have a certain section for the dogs to run and play. And this would be perfect, because there's, no one uses that part of the beach where the rotary is to the, going into Winthrop, going towards Winthrop. No one uses that. No one sits there on there, because the sand is different. It's, it's not really sand. It's like mud-ish kind of sand. So no one really sits there. So, it's, it's a place where no one uses, and it could be utilized for a really good dog park, and we could monitor it to see if we could, you know, especially because I've had, after I did this motion last year, I got some calls saying, "Well, what if they don't pick up the poop? It's, it's, you know, it's not good for the water," and ba, 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 ba. But, I mean, if they did it right, I think it could work. And it's a great place, because no one uses it. So, they start after the piping plovers, that's where they start. So, we should look into it. So we should look into it. It died in the water. No pun intended. But anyways, maybe we can bring this up again. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors?
Mr. President?
Counselor Agenzio.
I understand what Counselor Sawaya is saying. And I'm only looking for a very small portion of the beach. You know, I understand people want to go down and use the beach, and some people are afraid of dogs and what have you. I totally understand that. Just a small section, like I say, maybe closing the window when they're not allowed, Memorial Day to Labor Day instead of through October and starting April 1st, when just people are walking on the beach in their overcoats. So if we can send this to the DCR, maybe they have some suggestions, and Counselor McKenna brings up an excellent one. Thank you. And there's other cities and towns that do allow this. I know in Ahot, they have a dog-friendly beach. They, you can't park, but, I mean, so you can't go, but they have a dog-friendly beach there. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, I like dogs. I carry dog treats with me up on the beach because there's so many people walking down there with them. And most of the dogs are good. But, you know, this particular area that, you know, Counselor Agenzio was suggesting is actually all my ward. And I know the people that live in the homes across the street have an issue with this. So, you know, I would, I would think twice about, you know, agreeing to this.
That was just, that area was just a suggestion.
Right, I understand. And, you know, I like Counselor McKenna's idea of, you know, the area down by One Boulevard and, you know, down that neighborhood.
It's my ward, too.
And that's not one, too.
Well, it's the beach. It's really not.
Leave it at Ward 1. Leave it at Ward 1. And they can't, and they can't get flooded in that area. But, you know, I have, I have an issue with this. So, you know, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Permission to speak from the chair?
We're ready.
Oh, thank you. I was waiting. I thought, I thought that was going to be the first no. So do we know why, and this, maybe it's just me, but do we know why that dogs are banned from being, being on the beach at certain times of the year? Does anyone?
Spent a year.
Right. And that's my question, is why is it that way? I feel, as someone who pays taxes in this community, not only that, who pays to have a dog license in this community, that I should be able to walk my dogs on the beach whenever I want. But I also want to know why people are opposed to this. If any of the counselors could shed light on that, why the opposition to having dogs on the beach? I just, I think this is kind of silly. I agree with Counselor Agenzio's motion. I think it should be the whole beach. They should be allowed all year. It's just me. And I love my dogs almost as much as I love my kids, for the record. Anyone else? And nobody has any more information on why or, all right. Yes, sir, we can do a roll. Call Madam Clark. Please call the roll.
On the motion, Counselor Agenzio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
No.
No. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hermio is absent. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowosowski?
No.
No. Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Coggiandro.
Ruff. No, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, the motion is approved. Calendar item, calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the mayor be requested to contact the state delegation in Mastaut to repair all state roadways through Bell Circle to include routes 60, 16, 107, and 1A. Each of these state-owned highways needs major repair. Counselor Zambudo is recused from this motion.
Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion speaks for itself. Although I did call our state delegation, both Rep. Janino in Turco and Senator Edwards, they got on it immediately. And so some of the work's already started to be done and continuing, I hope to finish it because there's a lot of landmines out there that need to be fixed.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Can we just amend this to add the Linway?
Hey, no comments from you.
Do we know if it's?
It's DCR.
Okay, so it's DCR. So we would have to amend it to add DCR. On the motion as amended, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 27, motion presented by Counselors McKenna and Kelly that the city council request Tom O'Brien of HYM to appear before the city council to provide a construction progress update on Suffolk Downs at the May 6 city council meeting.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Counselor Kelly and I put a call into Tom O'Brien, HYM, Suffolk Downs, to shed some light and set the record straight of the rumors that are going around that HYM is not doing well. We, as a city and a council, are banking on this development mostly from the revenue to fund the new high school. Tom O'Brien's been up here for eight years. He's been, he's a stand-up guy, and he's always told us what's going on. So I trust that he will come up next week and give us an honest update on what's going on down there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, in light of the fact that the city is counting on HYM being one of the biggest revenue streams to fund the high school, I think it'll give everyone some peace of mind if Mr. O'Brien can come in and just assure us all that the project is still on course. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 28, motion presented by Counselors Kelly and McKenna that the mayor request the city solicitor to draft special legislation requiring that the city enter into an agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and DCR, providing for regulations concerning the closure of the floodgate on Winthrop Parkway.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this motion comes in response to the last storm where some residents' personal property homes got damaged as a result of the floodgates not being closed. We understand that the floodgate is not the property of the city of Revere. It is DCR's property. However, that, just because it's not the city of Revere's property, doesn't mean that decisions regarding whether or not that floodgate is closed doesn't impact, directly impact residents and taxpayers in the city. It does. Therefore, I believe there should be some type of at least joint decision-making process so that, you know, between the mayor and the ward counselor and DCR can make a joint decision as to when the floodgate is closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So after my presentation in the last meeting about why the floodgates weren't closed, and Mayor Keefe called me the next day and assured me that we would make the decision, Mayor, the mayor, the mayor, and myself. So hopefully that will happen, that the next storm happens, and they'll, they'll say, okay, Joanne, yes, there's nor'easter coming in, and we need to close the gates. So they'll assure me that they'll close the gates. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I totally agree with this motion. And the woman who was up here a couple weeks ago that spoke about her basement being flooded really hit me. And I think this is something that was, it wasn't common practice back in the '90s that the city would do this, but they would do it, do it somewhat often. So I know it's not Revere property, but this does affect Revere residents. And anytime we have a chance to stop any damage or any damage to houses, vehicles, anything like that, that's something the city should take a hard look at and just make the call. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'm disgusted the way this was handled by DCR. You know, that gentleman that refused to do it, even if for two hours, I don't care if it would be one hour, if it made a difference, they should have saved our neighborhood. And I remember way back when, when Donnie Goodwin was the superintendent, he didn't care what DCR said. He went down and closed the gate himself. Paul was probably with him at the time. They went down there with a whole crew, and they closed those gates. And the city of Revere told DCR, they told DCR that we're blocking it off, that you better get guys on either end to block it. And if they didn't, then the city did it and stopped the traffic. So, you know, I think we have to get on DCR and, you know, see what we can do to force the issue whenever it's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the leeway. I would also like to amend, could I, could I put an amendment in this, that the pumping stations on Bennington Street and Broad Sound Ave be opened during these storms? Turned on, okay. Thank you. Because a couple of months ago, Bennington Street was underwater, it was under three feet of water. So, and I don't know if the pumping station was working or not, but it does take out the water from a lot of streets on low-lying areas in Beachmont. So I would, I would like to amend that, too, for the pumping stations. That's, yes, they are.
Counselor Kelly, all good with the amendments? Any other counselors? On the motion as amended, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 29, motion presented by Counselor Haas that the city council award certificates of commendation to the life skills students who assist Mrs. Sally Brannos behind the scenes at the recreation department. The life skills program has grown to seven students since its inception eight years ago. The students assist with shredding to painting props for city events. The students truly are the unsung heroes of the department.
Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to save my comments for the night that the certificates are awarded. Thank you.
Very good. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 30, motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya that the city council award a certificate of commendation to Nick Reistrum, the city engineer, and Don Chermella, chief of infrastructure, for their fast and efficient work in Oak Island during the MBTA track shutdown, which ultimately saved the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Counselor Garino Sawaya.
I will save my comments for the presentation. Thank you.
Very good. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 31, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the city council present a certificate of commendation to Richie Scinelli in recognition and celebration of his 70th birthday.
Counselor Silvestri.
I will save my nights for the night we give him a certificate, but if you grew up in the city of Revere, I think you know Richie Scinelli, so it'll be a fun night.
Can we amend the motion to have a cake? No, I'm kidding. All in favor, all opposed? That concludes the meeting. We have a point of personal privilege from Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is more of a public service announcement for our veterans in Revere. Just want to remind everybody, all our veterans, that this Wednesday, May 1, is the food drive behind the American Legion. And everything is free. You just have to make sure you call the Veterans Office at 781-286-8119 and put your name on the list. You just drive up, they put a couple, a bag of food in your, in your car. You don't have to even get out. They do all the lifting for you. So show up. Right now, we service almost over 300 people in the city, and there's still food left over. Food comes from the food bank, Boston Food Bank, and everybody loves when they go. So please, sign up and let them know you're going to come. And it's good food, there's fruits, there's vegetables, there's canned food. Any, almost anything you need is there for you. It's not like shopping at Stop &amp; Shop, but it's, you know, it's something there for you to get, get you over the hump. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor, if I may, I just want to say that this food bank services, we've been doing this food bank. I hopped on in 2020. It's every month, the first Wednesday of every month. So all the information Counsel Nowosowski just gave, please come down there if you're a veteran or your family member's a veteran. Come down, get food. And like he said, there is such a spread down there, fruits, vegetables, fats, proteins, everything, everything you need.
Mr. President, just a little addendum, 10:30 in the morning, nothing is given out afternoon time. So get there early. And you'll get in line, and they'll take care of you. You're in and out. They got some great people from the VFW that work in there to help give out the food. And, you know, Don is there, and I knew, I knew VSO is there, our veteran service officer, Isaac McDaniel. And everybody's a big help. So thank you. And thank you, Mr. President, for your help.
Counselor Silvestri? With that said, the meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene on May 6. Have a great evening, everyone.
Celtics are winning.